We'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnson City Council Meeting number 23-12 to order. Sam, roll call, please.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Cope.
Here.
Ready. Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here. I'd like to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see several young people in the audience this evening. I'd invite, what we like to do is we like to invite the young people to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now that we're almost dry again. Before you slip away, I want you to introduce yourselves to the audience.
My name's Harper Cope. I'm his daughter.
I'm Ella Dre. I'm from Belle, Colorado.
Oh, wow. Came a long ways for a city council meeting.
I'm Davis Cope. I'm Harper's sister. Oh, that's right. Then I'm his son, yeah.
You have to come over here and speak into the microphone.
My name is Quinn Emers.
My name is Briella Walker.
Very good. Well, thank you. You did a nice job leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Appreciate it.
They tried to take the mayor's as in.
Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No agenda changes this evening. Thank you.
Council members, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications. We have a couple of scheduled public communications this evening. The first is recognition of outstanding performance in collar brass pinning ceremony for Johnston Police Officer Ethan Ming. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to share some great successes with another one of our Johnston Police Officers and offer some overdue recognition for his service to our community. So, we're going to spend a little time tonight recognizing Ethan Ming. Mr. Ming, would you mind joining us, please? We've got a commendation that we're going to award to him first, and then we're going to go through the ceremonial process of a collar brass pinning as he gets appointed to a corporal's position. So, to begin, in 2019, Officer Ethan Ming was assigned to the Investigations Unit as a detective and performed those duties with honor and distinction until June 2023. His major case accomplishments include a murder investigation in March of 2022, where he was the lead investigator and ultimately brought forward a successful criminal case resulting in a murder conviction. Another significant accomplishment occurred in January 2021 when a shooting occurred, and Detective Ming was assigned as the lead detective. This investigation identified several members of a criminal gang who were involved in multiple shootings and robberies throughout the Des Moines Metropolitan area. Detective Ming's efforts led to several criminal convictions for offenses that occurred within our city and also surrounding jurisdictions. Detective Ming's other investigative efforts are too numerous to fully detail, but include criminal investigations related to home invasions, burglaries, two fatal pedestrian accidents, and multiple other felonious and misdemeanor happenings that occurred within the city of Johnston. Many of the above listed investigations led to multiple offenders being convicted and sentenced to prison. Detective Ming's performance is a credit to this department and is in keeping with the uppermost traditions of public service. He has contributed significantly to the mission of my command, and he has served to continue the well-being of the city of Johnston. It gives me great pleasure to award Ethan Ming with a commendation for meritorious service for his efforts while assigned as a detective in the Johnston.
Our guests, as well as with our staff all the time, that I'm so proud of the. I've known this guy since he was just a little guy. And I've known his dad and family for a long time, too. When I first learned that he had an interest in going into policing, I was a little surprised, but not too surprised, because you know, you're just, you've always been an incredible person with, you know, great skills, great ethics, you know, all of the things that make for, you know, someone with a great character. And so, when I heard that you were going into policing and then eventually coming to Johnston, I was just, I couldn't have been more proud and excited. Of course, and it's been how many years now?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half? That's incredible. So, you know, I'm excited for, you know, this recognition of you tonight. I'm really pleased to see your entire family here showing their support for what you do. I just want to say thank you for what you do for our community and all the residents.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
I feel like I can shorten up this next part after that. Ethan is a stellar man and a lifelong Johnston product that we're all proud of. So, with this next step now with Ethan, just to give you a little bit of a background, he began his commitment in the Johnston Police Department in the summer of 2014, serving as an intern while pursuing his degree in criminology from the University of Northern Iowa. Upon completion of his education, he applied for a sworn position with the department and was hired in the fall of 2015 as a police officer. After successfully completing ILA's Basic Training Academy and the Johnston Police Department's Field Training Program, Officer Ming was assigned to Third Watch, which is the department's afternoon shift. Throughout his time as a patrol officer, Ming held various assignments to include crime scene investigator, property and evidence technician, field training officer, officer in charge, quick reaction team operator, and has become the department's lead defensive tactics and use of force instructor. At the end of 2019, Officer Ming was selected to transition to the Investigations Unit to assume the role of detective, where he also served as the department's intelligence officer and assisted in training two additional new investigators. Detective Ming successfully investigated a broad spectrum of cases during his tenure, which we've already recognized this evening. Ethan, excuse me, Ethan now takes an important next step in his career, assuming the duties of corporal of the department's Third Watch, where he first started here. His selection for this first-line leadership assignment is a privilege that he's earned through steadfast dedication to the department and the Johnston community that he grew up in, as well as his heartfelt commitment to growing the expertise of this organization and of the profession. This time, I'd like to ask Ethan's wife, Taylor, to step forward. She's going to participate in the collar brass pinning, which is a tradition of law enforcement. We can get the mayor and council to come enjoy.
I'm fine, but I just want to make sure you're comfortable.
Just a personal note here. Ethan was one of the first cops I ever met when I came into the Johnston Police Department. And to his family, you should be so proud of him. He has carried himself as a model officer in this police department from the moment I've met him. He has tremendous potential in the future of this profession, and I believe very strongly that someday he'll have my job if he really wants it. So, whatever you're doing, keep it up, Ethan. Great job out of you. And we're so looking forward to the gifts that you're going to provide to the young officers as we lead this next generation of the department. Congratulations.
Okay, we have another scheduled item under Public Communications, and that is a proclamation proclaiming June 21st as Go Skateboarding Day. And I want to invite. Do you want to invite your friend up as well? I also have some information. Sit down. Why don't you come over here, Briella? You too. Tell me what your name is again. Quinn. I also have some information about Briella, and so I'm going to brag on her just a little bit. Briella, how old are you?
Eight.
When did you start skateboarding? Ten months ago?
Yeah, ten.
So, what I'm told is that before the end of last winter, you had never set your foot on a skateboard before. At the end of last summer, you'd never set your foot on a skateboard before. You started watching a lot of girls and boys on Instagram and YouTube, and you wanted to try out the skateboarding that they did. The first time you stepped on a skateboard was at the Skateboard Park in Grimes. Is that correct? Your goals, from a micro standpoint, Briella, typically, you typically pick one trick from videos that you watch online, and then you try to perfect it during a two-hour session at the Lordson Skateboard. Or sometimes you go to the Urbendale Skateboard Park. Is that correct? Your goals in 2023, your first goal this spring, this is what I'm told. Now, if I'm wrong, you correct me, okay? Okay. I'm told that your first goal this spring was to drop, was a drop-in at Lordson's Largest Bowl, which is about an 11 to 12 straight down drop. Pretty intimidating to stand there and just watch you do that. Can you tell me what that is?
So, there's this large bowl, and it has pool coping on the edge, so it's almost like a pool edge. So, it makes your board go a bit higher up than normal coping would do. So, it's pretty intimidating to see how tall it is when you stand next to it.
Do you have that one perfected?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's see, I lost my place here. Your other goal for the summer was to compete in your first competition, which you did at Grind for Life, which was hosted at Lordson Skateboard Park. How was that?
Good. I got eighth place in the competition.
How old are you?
Eight.
What are you going to be doing when you're nine?
Um, I don't even know.
Sky's the limit, right?
Yeah.
We have a video that we want to watch here. This is Briella Walker skateboarding, showing us. So, how did you get into skateboarding?
I watched a lot of YouTube videos on like Sky Brown skateboarding and stuff like that. So, she inspired me to start skateboarding.
Do you know anybody else that skateboards?
Yeah, I do. I have a lot of friends at Lordson. Some are named Reese Ryder, Mila, Mina, Jaleen, Aria. Yeah, I have a lot of friends.
But tell us who your friend is that you have with us.
Uh, her name is. And.
Here we are. Can you tell us what you're doing there?
I was airing over two sets of boards, and that one. I was doing a tail stall, and I haven't done that yet. So, I was really proud that I did it. And then that's a blunt. Another air.
I think skateboarding is an Olympic sport now, isn't it? Is that something you want to, are you aspiring to be an Olympic athlete? Well, you know, you started very young, so I have no doubt you're going to be able to do that. So, keep it up. Keep up the good work. So, with that, I'm going to read the proclamation proclaiming June 21st as Go Skateboarding Day. Whereas, Go Skateboarding Day was created in 2004 to highlight the many benefits of skateboarding, to make the sport more accessible to skateboarders of all abilities, and to grow local skateboarding communities where youth can enjoy skateboarding together. And whereas, skateboarding is an activity that promotes physical and mental health by getting kids off their screens and outside. Skateboarding promotes social skills and personal interactions at the more than 20,000 skateboard parks around the world. And whereas, skateboarding was invented in the United States but has very much become a global sport. In 2022, skateboarding made its Olympic debut at the Tokyo Games. And whereas, June 21st is the official start of summer and the longest day of the year, a perfect day for veteran skateboarders to skate to their heart's content and for those who are new to the sport to get started. And whereas, the city of Johnston joins the U.S. Congress and cities across our nation and the international community in recognizing Go Skateboarding Day. I, now therefore, I, Paula Dernfeld, mayor of the city, and on behalf of the city council of Johnston, hereby proclaim June 21st as Go Skateboarding Day in the city of Johnston and encourage everyone to take advantage of the many benefits of skateboarding by picking up a skateboard and going out to skate. What are you going to do on Skateboarding Day?
Um, just skate around with my friends. It's really busy, so maybe meet new friends. I don't know.
So, is it Quinn? So, Quinn, do you skateboard?
Scoot instead of skateboard.
Scoot instead of skateboard. That's great. That's great. You're outside, you're very active and getting some fresh air, right? So, great. Well, Briella, I want to present this proclamation to you. Janet, do you want to come up and take a picture? Yeah, you want to join us? Oh, Tom, I didn't see you. Just out there.
Yeah, I'm high better.
So, Tom Mallory is a resident of Johnston. He's also very involved in skateboarding communities in the metro area.
Yep, skate tourism. We are.
Hold up the page. There you go.
Perfect.
Very good. Well, congratulations. Eight years old. That's incredible. Okay, we are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll go on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Northwest Beaver Drive Pump Station Improvements Project and consider Resolution Number 23-158, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Consider the construction bids and consider Resolution Number 23-159, making a ward of contract. We'll open this public hearing at 7:22.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. On May 24th, the city received bids for the Northwest Beaver Drive Pump Station Improvements. The project will update 25-year-old pumps and controls to increase the efficiency of the booster station located there at 78th and Northwest Beaver Drive, which was first installed in 1997. We did receive six bids for the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $540,000. The low bid received was $381,878, approximately 30% underneath the engineer's estimate. C.L. Carroll was the low bidder for the project. This contractor has worked successfully on Johnston projects in the past. The most recent project was the Merle Hay Pump Station that's located in front of Johnson Brothers Distributing. Staff and the engineer would recommend accepting bids for the project to be happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions for Matt? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing then at 7:23. We have two resolutions to consider. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-158?
No move.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-159? No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider second reading of ordinance Number 1098, amending the Johnston revised ordinances of 2007, Chapter 153 Residential Rental Code. Second reading.
Good evening, council, mayor. Here for the second reading. We did have one change, if you remember. We updated the actual adoption date to August 1st. That way, it matches the staff report and gives us time to make the transition. Otherwise, there have been no changes and no more public input or questions.
Council, any questions?
I don't have a question, but obviously, you know, some, the unfortunate issue that happened over in eastern Iowa in the last few weeks has really, I think, heightened the importance of rental code inspections and then, you know, making sure these properties are well-maintained. And so, this thing sort of shines a light on the important work that is done as part of our inspection process. And so, sometimes, and obviously, in Johnston, a lot of our buildings are younger than some, certainly the building that had this issue. But I think it just highlights the importance of making sure that folks who are living in a property that maybe they don't own is as safe and safe for them to live in, and so, really underscores the importance of the work that you guys do.
Absolutely. Something we think about all the time. So, appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance Number 1098? No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, would it be appropriate at this time to make a motion for the third reading to adopt and publish, to waive the third reading?
Do you have any concerns?
Therefore, I move we waive the third reading and go on to adopt and publish the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second reading and possible adoption of the electric franchise ordinance 1099 with Mid-American Energy Company.
Mayor and council, at your last meeting, you did approve the revenue purpose statement and the first reading of the ordinance. Now, the city is obligated to give a 90-day notice to Mid-American Energy. And in order to provide that with the current draft or the current ordinance drafted as an October 1st start date and to meet that 90-day requirement, staff is requesting that tonight you approve the second reading and then waive the third reading and move to final adoption this evening. With that, I would note there's a representative from Mid-American Energy here tonight. If you have any questions for them, otherwise, we are recommending approval. Thank you.
Council, any questions? And Mike?
No, but I believe this man would have been young enough to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilman Cope, as you get older, everyone looks.
Couldn't agree more.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance Number 1099?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to waive third reading of this ordinance and to adopt and publish. I don't see the number.
1099.
1099 of ordinance 1099, waive third reading of ordinance 1099 and to adopt and publish.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider second reading and possible adoption of the gas franchise ordinance 1100 with Mid-American Energy Company.
Again, this is similar to the last ordinance with the 90-day notice requirement and with the. with the ordinance drafted with a start date of October 1st, recommending that you approve the ordinance tonight by approving the second reading and waiving the third reading and moving to adoption. Thank you.
Council, have any questions or comments? Now, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1100?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I'll make a motion to waive third reading of ordinance 1100 and to adopt and publish.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
I seconded that motion, by the way. I don't know if we got a second on that, did we?
Yeah, we're covered.
Good. We did.
Motion passed. Councilman Evans was a little quiet, but I did hear.
Okay. I'll yell next time.
Still warm out from all that sun. Item 7D, consider approval of Resolution Number 23-167, approving a new agreement between the city of Grimes, Iowa, and the city of Johnston, Iowa for the sharing of administrative resources, equipment supporting fire and emergency medical services, and consider approval of Resolution 23-168, approving a 90-day extension of the current June 1st, 2020 agreement between the city of Grimes, Iowa and the city of Johnston, Iowa for sharing the administrative resources and equipment supporting fire and emergency medical services. That's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful. Thank you, mayor and council. So tonight, this is the final 2080 agreement between the city of Grimes and city of Johnston for the Johnston-Grimes Metropolitan Fire District. And really, this has taken a lot of work. And really want to thank everyone from both the city of Grimes and here at the city of Johnston for their work on this agreement over the last several months to get us to this point. I would note that the Fire Board did meet on May 16th. They did unanimously recommend approval of the general outline of the agreement that was included in the packet. I would note that since that Fire Board meeting, legal counsel from both city of Grimes and Johnston did make some changes. Redline copies were included in the packet, so you could see those changes. But overall, pretty minor in nature. This was reviewed at the June 5th workshop. So I'm not going to go through great detail, but I just hit a few very key points. This is a 10-year agreement running from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2033. This agreement does automatically renew for two years at the expiration of the agreement unless either party gives a written notice at least 18 months in advance prior to expiration. So it does have an evergreen clause within the agreement itself. There will be an administrative city initially. That will be the city of Johnston that will handle the financing and employ all the employees for the district, the costs of the district operation and capital costs. With the exception of fire prevention personnel will be based on the funding formula. This funding formula is very similar to the funding formula that was in place on the current agreement. Personnel costs for the fire marshal, deputy fire marshal, and other fire prevention services will be based on the actual fire prevention activity that occurs as provided to each city. And there'll be a true-up payment based on the actual activity that occurs each year. Equipment for the district itself will initially remain the owner under the ownership of each city. Expenditures after July 1st of this year, over $5,000, will be owned by the district for the benefit of each city. But the administrative city will actually have the ownership of that. On July 1st of 2024, each city then will transfer their assets for that equipment that's being used by the district, except with, except for real estate and buildings. Those will be retained by each city. And then the administrative city will take ownership of that. That's really for insurance and liability reasons. And again, with administrative city essentially asking, acting as a fiscal agent, it makes it a lot easier. Will be a review of the equipment that's being transferred and compare it against a depreciation schedule. And then if there's any true-up based on the fire formula, that payment will be made around October 31st of 2024. There's been a review by at least our finance department here at the city of Johnston. Any true-up should be pretty minimal as we believe both are pretty equitable to the actual fire formula itself. I would note that the city of Grimes has given tentative approval to the general outline at their May 30th meeting and will formally consider approval at their June 27th meeting. They also did approve a 90-day extension to the current 2080, which we do have that resolution on here also. And the reason we have that resolution is simply because of the late date of Grimes on June 27th. If there would be any hiccup on their end or there's some word that they want changed, we have continuity at that point. So that is the reason why there's two resolutions. You know, we expect to go forward with the actual new 2080 on July 1st, but we do have that backup contingency of the 90-day extension. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have on the proposed 2080 agreement. So thank you.
Council, have any questions for Mike?
So, Mike, I'm just kind of looking. The administrative city responsibilities, as I read through the agreement, it doesn't, I didn't see it stating specifically that it'll be Johnston initially. Or how does it, does it say in the actual document?
It does.
How does that work?
It does have it in there. If you look at it under definitions, I think is where it shows up. So under Section 2 definition Administrative City, the city that will provide administrative oversight, payroll, human resources, information technology, and legal support for the district. The city of Johnston shall be the administrative city for the district and hereby consents to that designation.
Perfect, okay. And then, and I noticed earlier also later on when this administrative city section, it makes a reference that the city of Grimes shouldn't be, won't be employing firefighters. So that kind of by de facto also kind of cements that. And then it also is, as you, the kind of the agenda item kind of or description indicates that changing that administrative city is a decision that is acknowledged shouldn't be made lightly. Is that fair?
Correct. I mean, there's language in there that Grimes requested specifically that, you know, in the future, if there should be a change in administrative city, that that should be reviewed by the Fire Boards. The Fire Board would have that authority to consider that. But then each city also has to approve of that designation change. And that review will occur every five years while the agreement is running. But I think there is an acknowledgement in the agreement that it shouldn't just change willy-nilly, I would say, because again, there's pretty big impacts to the organization and even staffing and moving people from one city to the other city from appointment reasons. So really, stability, I think, is.
Proability is the objective now. Okay, we get to be it for five years, you get to be it for.
No.
Stability is really, and there's a general consensus among both communities that that's the approach.
Yeah.
From your sense, okay, good.
Now, that's not saying, I think, if there's someday Grimes is 100,000 people and Johnston's 30,000, that maybe there shouldn't be a change.
Right, right, right. That's a kind of a fundamental change in kind of where we are today.
Other questions for Mike? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-167?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-168?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,148,557.67. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Kope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. We have all ready, gone through the city administrator staff comments and city council comments. But Councilman Ready, I did not call on you for anything that you might want to add.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
For, yeah, city council comments?
It's going to be a pass.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else to come before the council this evening? If not, we are adjourned.